I'd like to call a meeting. January the 10th of 2013 is in order. If you would like to, if you would join with me in a word of prayer and then follow that please. I believe. Our heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you, Father, for the opportunity to come together and try to make decisions that would be in the best interest of students of this county and for the employees of this system. We ask that you go with us, guide and direct us in your son's name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now we'll ask for approval of the agenda. Do we have a... Chairman, I'd like to add one item to that. I think that if some of us are not going to be able to be there on Tuesday for this meeting, that we ought to at least have a short discussion on security of the school system among ourselves tonight.
All right.
I'll second that.
Are they all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Would you like to insert that say between items seven and eight? Or way down at the end? Right at the end? Personnel report? Yeah. All right, with the addition of the discussion on school safety, do you have a motion to approve the agenda? I make a motion, may I? Second?
Say.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, I'd like to welcome our guests. Thank you all for coming this afternoon, keeping out in this wet nasty weather. We appreciate you coming. Now we'll ask for the approval of the minutes for the December 13th, 2012 meeting. Do we have a motion? Any additions or discussion on the minutes? Any opposed? All in favor? Any opposed? Item number seven is GCEA.
Thank you. This month, I think I mentioned last year, in January, the last week of January, the 27th through February 1st this year, is recognized across the state of Tennessee as Space Week. And I am happy to announce that Richland Elementary, 4th grade teacher, Missy Logg, received a $1,000 grant from TDA this year to provide some extra activities and things for her students there at Richland Elementary during... That has... It all has to pertain to Space Week, but it's things that she can buy and use in her classroom throughout the year, so excited about that. Second, I would like to mention that, as most of you know, our state legislator, state legislation is going back into...
Session.
Session, yes, I'm sorry. And there will be many things that could affect education in the state of Tennessee, so just stay, try to stay educated, I guess, about the issues and just kind of see what they're doing that could affect our board, our teachers and our students in the county. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Huddins. Item number eight is our second reading of school board policy, 6.205 concerning students assigned. Just read.
I'll address that. Of course, this is one that we've worked on for several months and got our first reading on it, and I think we're ready for second reading, so I put it out there for you all to entertain a motion for second reading on that.
All right, do we have a motion on school board policy 6.205?
I just have one quick question, and I know we've probably answered it, but I need to ask again. Line number seven, it says eligible students shall have the opportunity to transfer at the beginning of each school year. Is there anything that says who determines what is an eligible student? Is that up to the principals? Okay.
And what is the NCAA rule? They don't like the football coach at Richmond or Riceville versus Giles County? They want to transfer just so they play football?
They sit out a year instead. I believe that's true.
Once you have participated in varsity sports, if you transfer schools, you sit out one year. All right, do we have a motion? I make a motion, may I?
I'll second that.
Any other discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Item number nine, first reading of school board policy 1.802 concerning the 504 and grievance procedures. Just read.
Yeah, I believe I sent that out to you, and that was the one that came in the mail with probably on the green paper, that it was suggested by Tennessee School Board that we update our policy and be sure that we have a specific grievance policy in place and a specific procedure to follow should anybody question any of this. And so we already had a policy, we're just adding more to it so that we have that grievance policy in place, so I'd recommend it for free. Both of them, thank you.
All right, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion. That's it.
I'll have a motion in a second. Any discussion or questions? If not, all in favor? Any opposed? Item number 10 is our Healthier U.S. Schools.
Yes, we have Ms. Ann Chacklin, who's going to talk to us a little bit about some great things that she does and some recognition.
All right.
I don't want to steal her thunder.
I was excited. Well, I was so proud of Ms. Newton, I said, "Well, actually, I forgot to call Ms. Newton." Because I just thought I was going to tell you a little tidbit of information, but we're really excited. We started a process back in February of last year to achieve at least one school that could make Healthier U.S. Challenge. And Ms. Newton was so gracious to agree to be our first starting and kickoff place. It's awarded individually by schools, it is not given by districts, and it's based on schools that are recognized by the United States Department of Agriculture for having a healthy school environment that includes both nutrition and physical activity. They have four levels, they have bronze, silver, gold and gold with distinction. In the state of Tennessee, I looked that up to see, there are about 150 schools in the state of Tennessee that meet the Healthier U.S. Challenge, but we were one of 16 that got the gold of distinction, so Ms. Newton's team certainly needs to be applauded for the hard work that they do to achieve that. So I was really excited that we got that. They notified me sometime during Christmas break. So it took literally from February to December for this to come together, for us to get that. They will have a ceremony in the future, and we haven't scheduled it yet. They have a new person at the State Department that has to schedule with USDA. And at that time, they'll have a representative from USDA that will come down, they'll have banners for the school, they will have a celebration, we'll be having one to recognize the school at that time. So I wanted to give you all plenty of notice to know, to be watching for that. We hope to do that probably February. So again, I'll give you, try to give you plenty of notice when USDA says they can come, then I would like for at least some of you, if not all of you, to be able to attend at the school for the celebration. If it hadn't been for Ms. Newton and Robin Farah and Denise Sanders, it couldn't have all come together because it was a teamwork that we had. So at this point, it's just a, it's a nice recognition that we have. It started several years ago, they started trying to move the process towards this, but this is something I think that Mr. Eaton and I had actually talked about at one point in time about during the Wellness Committee, that we talked about it. Well, we already had the process going at that point in time at Richland Elementary, so I just want to say we were very excited over that and again, hope that you can participate in the ceremony when they have that. If I got any questions about that. The second thing I want to say is we're working, now that we're excited we got one, now we're going to go after some more. So we're going to do, with the help of Ms. Sanders and I are going to work, she's going to work on helping me figure out who can actually meet the criteria. Some of the schools, it has to do with the physical activity and the amount of time that's spent in physical activity, they have pretty high criteria and requirements, and not all schools can meet that requirement. So we're looking at that and a few other items that we need to make sure we can meet before we ever start the application process, because you can't get started and then have to stop. And some of the things are, for me, it's fundraisers with food. If you're selling any kind of food or food products, the school does not qualify. So there's pretty strict standards, so we can look at those, but I'll share those a little later as we move a little farther on that process. The second thing was, we got a letter in the meantime, we're one of two schools in the state of Tennessee that was recognized by the School Nutrition Association as a District of Excellence, and I don't even think I've written that for. And we got that this week. And then on August 22nd, I put a little booklet on everybody's place, that's the Tennessee Department of Agriculture, the Commissioner of Agriculture, Julius Johnson, came back in August 22nd, and we have, we're the first school in the state of Tennessee or anything to be written up about school lunch, and I can't count to tell you what the page is. I told Mr. Eaton about the fourth page, and it's not the fourth page. So whatever page it is, we start, we have about four pages. It starts where there's strawberries on the bottom of the page, and this is a flyer, a publication that's put out by the Department of Agriculture, that it's recognizing Richland Elementary School again for their healthy choices, and it also recognizes school nutrition programs. We have about four pages. I have an employee, some employees that are on, actually, the front cover are my employees, and then this is a child from Richland Elementary, where the only school in the state was, that was recognized. And Tracy was there, I think some of you probably saw the paper, she did a wonderful write-up back in August, but the pamphlet just came out again at the end of the year, so I wanted to make sure all of y'all had that so you could see what we have. And then last week, we had excitement because we actually met, they did a reauthorization in 2010 called the Healthy, Hungry, Free Kids Act, and we met our certificate of compliance with new requirements for the National School Lunch Program under the Healthy, Hungry, Free Kids Act. I had to read all of it because that's what it is, on January 4th of this year. So we're real excited, there's about, they say about 20 districts in the state, some, about, we're one of about 20 that have met the requirements at this point in time for USDA. It's required by USDA that you have to complete, but we've completed it pretty early, so we're pretty excited. So other than that, that was my exciting news. We've just had lots of stuff all at one time, and lots of projects, been working on for almost a year on some of these, and just now are seeing completion of those, so we're going to start our other projects again with some other schools that we can see what we can meet on the Healthier U.S. Challenge. So that's all I have. And then I, we brought y'all a bag from School Nutrition, good for groceries. Saves the environment, don't have to use plastic grocery bags.
What do you do in your spare time?
Trying to get her to go look guns. Hey, hey, listen, I've got the desk, my desk, it's brown on it right now. So that's what's up, I'm getting ready for the next set of projects that we have. So certainly, we want to tackle, I'd really like to do at least three schools, the next projects, they did one last time, so did good, so I'm going to move with three this next time. And I have some principals that are interested, so they've expressed an interest, so we've just got to do some preliminaries and go through the initial checkoff list to see if they actually do meet that.
Appreciate your support and everything.
I was excited, it's, it's real exciting. So we'll have something for the paper on the Healthier U.S. Just want to get a little closer when we do the celebration and kind of include that at that point, but just kind of wanted to give you all some work. And Ms. Newton, do you have anything you would like to add? Ms. Sanders, do you want to add anything? We're excited. So thank y'all very much.
Thank you, Ms. Chaff.
And I'd just like to say that Ms. Chaff is very passionate about her work, and she stays busy all the time, and she keeps me busy with her work. She is really busy and always wants me to do this and wants me to do that, and she's out in front trying to do great things for our children.
And she just never wants to share her money.
But I have lots of projects that I want to do.
You do well. Send our congratulations to the...
You did projects, I did projects, y'all, I did these, because I thought they were really cute. We've been doing a milk mustache tour, and we did some in the fall, and so we had done originally, we had two other, tomorrow is World Milk Day. And so she started today, I'm not sure everybody can see, but they're really cute. And this is at Elton School, and they dressed up in their little cow costume, and they have a little milk mustache that we put on them and get their picture made. And then we have, I have some other ones that are classroom pictures, I'm not sure y'all can see very well.
Is it real milk or is it milk or magnesium?
No, no. We have little stick-on mustaches that curl up on the corners and you're sitting there and, anyway, wear gloves, that's what I'm saying, it's the flusies. But anyway, so yes, so we did that today, and then we have it tomorrow at another school. So some of the managers at the cafeteria asked, we didn't get to all the grades at some of the schools that wanted to have their pictures made. Some of the schools, we did do all of Richland Elementary, we got them, but we didn't finish at some of the other schools, so we're trying to go back and pick up some of the teachers that had expressed an interest and because the kids were excited about it. So yeah, that was my other project we got going on right now too, so we're working on it.
Send our congratulations to the staff at Richland Elementary.
Yeah, they did fabulous.
All right, our next item will be our discussion on school safety. Mr. Story or Mr. Potter, would you like to talk a little bit about it or?
Well, you know, 9/11 changed the way the country, Newtown, it changed the way we're going to have to be now. And, you know, Debbie was there, Zebby was there last night. And this was, it was a lot of discussion, Ms. Newton was there. Okay, take for instance, this window here only takes up to about the waist of a child. So you remember when all this come about, all these windows, okay, let's say they come up, and this is, this is y'all's stuff here now, you know, the school's thing. Let's say what, somebody said, "Well, we got to break these windows up." Nothing is coming without a cost, we know that. But, I don't know what's going to take place, but I do know if y'all say, "We want deputies," well, you're probably going to get them whether you want them or not, but I mean, why would you not want them? Somebody in school called, "We got to protect our children and our grandchildren and our schools." And like I said a while ago, people do this in the name of insanity, I'm sorry, I don't agree with that one bit, it's evil meanness. And these people, even a person that is off a little bit in the head, respect little children, six-year-old children, they love them, they respect them. This was meanness and, "Is a deputy going to stop it?" No, it's not. How do you stop it? There's no way. Unless you put a 12-foot concrete wall all the way around this, you can't stop it with people like this. But if we don't do something and it happens here, it's on us, right here, and the commissioner. If we do something and it happens, then we've done our part. But it's coming, believe me, it's coming. I'm not meaning a school shooting, I'm meaning that the officer in the school is coming and it's not, we don't need to go up there as a 3rd district school representative, school board, 5th district, 4th, we don't, our 5th district commissioner, we don't need to go up there at this meeting Tuesday as that. We need to go as Giles Countyans and try to figure out what we can do, because, you know, we got a, what, we got an SRO at Richland, one at Richland High for county, and one at Giles County High. Okay, then, and now some of you's not going to like what I'm going to say, but I mean, I say a lot of that stuff people don't like, but we've got three more schools in the city limits too, the city children go to school. We've got three more in the county, so if the city can come together and help us with a policeman or something, then that leaves the county with three instead of six.
Four in the city.
Well, see, well, we got one in, within two schools, so that leaves six more. Well, if they will come up with like Bridgeport Middle School and what is it, Bridgeport Middle School, Plaskell Elementary and Southside.
And alternative school.
Well, yeah, that, about that, how many do they have? But anyway, the, and so, and y'all, I know, are going to be asked to help pay for some of this, I know that, y'all do too, sure. Y'all have money? No. Do we have money? No. But it's coming. And it's something that's going, it's going to have to take place. I mean, if your kid is not safe at school, where's your kid safe at? And it's like I said up there, the most vulnerable part of the whole school day is when these little kids are getting off this bus or getting on this bus. This deputy cannot be everywhere. And if he do, the state, Richland, for instance, Richland High, the school playground out there, let's say some person wants to kill somebody, they, little children out there on playground, stop, he'll stop on highway killing, you cannot stop it, but maybe we can slow it down. It may never happen here, I hope it never happens anywhere in this world, but it has changed the way that we have to do business and we have to look at things and, you know, nobody wants property tax increase? Nope. Nobody wants wheel tax? Nope. Well, some do, yeah, some, but do I, would I mind paying another $100 a year on my taxes to put an officer in a school? No, I wouldn't mind it. But it's coming. So you know, that's left up to y'all to decide, say, "Well, yeah, we want one," or "No, we don't." But if you say, "No, we don't," I'm sorry, I believe you go get it anyway as you did. Don't you think so, JB?
I would hope so, but I don't know how we're going to pay for it.
And like I said before, you know, it brought up about arming some teachers. Well, I thought a lot about this, and I use this little lady right over here, 120 pounds, against Doug over here, 100, 250. He wants her gun, that's a good idea. But I mean, I asked, "Well, come," and then you say, "Well, we're going to go arm the bigger man." Well, you're discriminating against her. So see, either way you look at it, it's a problem. But believe me, it's coming. So y'all, you know, y'all, but I hope all of y'all can be up there Tuesday, because, you know, you will get a chance to speak, you will get, and y'all think that, you will get a chance to say what you think we need to do, because there's a lot of people going to have something to say, and there's going to be a lot of critics there that want to do different stuff, and that's going to be, a lot will be left up to y'all, because y'all are school boards. We're just the ones that give the money, y'all the ones that takes care of schools. So you know, it's in, really, it's in y'all's hands to say, "Yeah, we're going to do it," or, you know, or like say, "It's going to be done," I'm sure of that. But, and I know y'all was cutting money, I know that, and I know y'all are having the money, and I know y'all going to be asked to pay something too, I'm sure of it. Where are you coming from? That's why everyone wants to pay. But it's going to have to be done. And that's about all I got to say, but it has changed the way that the county and the country looks at things, because 9/11 changed a lot, this right here's changed a lot more. But when you kill a six-year-old kid, I mean, come on, it's not crazy, this is pure damn out evil. And this guy was. I mean, you kill your own mother before you go to school? And I, maybe I can ta, keep this off the record here, please. You know, we got handicapped children in our schools, and some of these teachers that, if you see a handicapped child, and this child comes to school, and maybe this child has been beat every once in a while, abused, you don't like students like that, because they grow up and they grow up, get madder and madder, and they take it out on anybody. First, I thought, the reason this guy done this, I thought, "Well, his mother was just a kindergarten teacher." So he was jealous of his mother and his children. No, 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 he was just so cute. So I don't, you know, I don't know, nobody ever know really what caused this guy to do this, but we had it happen right up there at Richland, and it can happen at any time. So if we don't do our part, and it happens, boy, Picking Jones County going to be on us for not trying to do something. And if we do something...
Even if we do something though, here's my question, because a lot of the reaction that's happening is knee-jerk to this whole situation. People have to calm down and figure out what we're going to do, okay? But my question is this, is putting one SRO at every school going to be enough? If we do that, are people not going to come back and say, "Well, you didn't do more"?
That's, that's what we're facing.
Right now, we're trying, you know, we're shooting, we're shooting BBs at an elephant, you know? This is a situation that, we're not going to solve it today, we're not going to solve it in the next, you know, six months, and I do agree we need to do, do more to protect our children, but I think, you know, if we're trying to put one SRO at a school, how is that going to help?
He can't be everywhere. I know what you're talking about.
You look at Giles County High School, you know, he's on one side of the building and something happens on the other side of the building, you know? But unless you, you have one in each classroom and one everywhere, is there going to be enough, you know, is it enough potential?
Somebody like this that wants to kill people is going to do it. If they have to drive a truck into a school bus on a road somewhere and then start shooting, they can do it. You can't, there's no way, nothing is foolproof. So you know, that's, that's what be coming up Tuesday, and you know, y'all, do you have something to say up there? You know, you get a chance to speak, people are out in the public that's going to be there. I don't think we'll, because there'd be so many people there, because you got city councils supposed to be there, the mayors of each town's supposed to be there, and I'll tell them too, "Don't come here as a mayor, Elton, or Elton Mayor, remember? You come here to Giles County and try to figure out how to solve this problem." But you're going to get a chance to speak, and say what you think, what you think ought to be done or needs to be done, you get a chance to speak.
Did y'all have any discussion whatsoever on how it can be funded?
Did what, done?
Did you have any discussion whatsoever over how it can be funded?
Well, I had Barry Dawes, I called Barry, I've known Barry Dawes ever since he's 12 years old. Well, that makes me look old, but anyway, I haven't known him that long, his family's been friendly. And I called him, and he said he is pretty sure that the federal and the state is going to help out on this. So I called him again and talked to him, they had a meeting yesterday, before Tuesday, and if he can come and tell us what come through, because he said he was a lot of deals coming through on this. So you know, if it's helped there, which, if you figure out nine counties, and let's say each county is $500,000, which some of them are going to be more, some of them be a little less, you got, what, 47 and a half million dollars, say 50 million dollars to cover Tennessee, well, that's a lot of money, it sounds like, across the state, protect or no, it's not, to protect children in school. But what y'all going to be faced with is like I told you, them windows, that's come up, remember the discussion on that? You, it was your school, well, yours too, wasn't it, JB? And Bill Houghton. But that, the windows are going to come to waste high. So what do you do? You know, do you put metal there? Do you brick it up? Either way, it's money, comes at a cost. But something's got to be done.
I just heard on the news the other night, Williamson County spent, what, $2.5 million to put an SRO in every elementary school, 34 of them, or 33 schools. Rutherford County, $1 million or somewhere along there for 11 schools. And that's for training and I guess supplies and vehicles and everything else to get these people to and from. And I saw what was in the paper the other day, and y'all's conversation of $250,000 or something to put them in all the schools here. From my standpoint, I'm all for doing whatever we can do, and whatever is logical to do from the standpoint of the schools and the safety of our children, not going to be against anything that comes up for them, but if you want to airtight these schools, 50 million dollars in the state of Tennessee is not even going to, it ain't even going to make a dent in it.
That's not enough to airtight Giles County?
Yeah. I mean, because you're talking about bulletproof doors, we're talking about, every school system that we have has to operate under a locked door system, where somebody has to go to a door to let somebody come into that school. And, you know, I don't know that we can... And, you know, I don't know that we can physically, FICA, manage that. Because of the amount of money that it would take, because, you know, how much does Giles County think about education? Last year showed us that quite a bit from the commission, because you took a half million dollars away from us. Okay? I mean, just bottom line, that's exactly what you did.
Yeah, you're right.
Took a half million dollars away from us. We're gonna be a half million dollars short this year, because we took a half million dollars out of our reserve fund to make up for it. Now Williamson County said, okay, we'll take two and a half million dollars out of reserve fund, and pay for all these SRO officers in the school. But, if you listen to all that conversation that was on television, they have no clue where they're gonna get that money from, for next year. They don't know. This is a recurring thing, so it's not a quarter billion dollars, or a half million dollars for the schools here. You know, if we came to the county commission and said, we need to do something for security for all our schools and for the safety of our kids, but you need to give us two million dollars, we're gonna get laughed clean out of the county commission room.
Yeah, one guy today-
But it's very realistic that that's what it would take for us to do even a twenty, twenty-five percent effective measure for all eight schools in Giles County, plus alternatives.
And, the problem being is that, that money is not a one-time thing.
No.
It, it's a recurring thing. You may be able to cut that in half, because once you get the programs in place, you'll be able to maybe cut it down to a million dollars, but then, every year, you're gonna, that's gonna have to come in.
Still got all the salaries for that, and all of the extras that go along with the benefits and everything.
All the cars, you know, all the, all the vehicles, upkeep.
One person told me, they said, well, we'll put a chain link fence, ten foot high, or a Constantino wire, really called a racial wire. That's not gonna stop bullets from going through, you can't do that. It's not gonna stop the law.
All of our schools sit right next to public roads.
There, there you go.
Why else would you build a school anywhere else, off in the middle of nowhere, that no one could get to? It's public access for the kids and for the parents.
And the unfortunate part, these are schools, they're not prisons.
Well, and then, they have been talking to, up in the house about arming, what was coming, arming some of the teachers. Well, did anybody in here have a gun, permit, handgun, permit? My dude, I went through that class. And, and what you do, when you go through that, let me tell you something if you don't really know, that was not thought about up there the other day. And that bullet comes out of a gun, it's your responsibility. If Mike's standing right there with a baseball bat and tells me, I'm thinking, beat your brains out, and I'm sitting here, and I got a gun, I better not shoot him right there, because the threat's not, that's what you, it teaches you. The threat's not there, and a lawyer will tear you apart. So, see, you got, it's a lot you have to learn, that was not discussed, about teachers carrying guns. And then I thought a lot about it, like I talked about a big guy over a little lady teacher. Get that gun, if they want it. But, it's a lot, when you go through the class, you learn that when that bullet comes out of a gun, it's your responsibility.
But the thing about it is, teaching someone how to use a gun, and teaching somebody how to shoot somebody, are two absolutely entirely separate things.
You cannot teach that.
Yeah.
But, you know, y'all will probably have to have, well, you won't be able to have more discussion before Tuesday, but, I really hope y'all can be there Tuesday, because it's gonna be a lot come out on this, and it's probably gonna be a long meeting. But, they're gonna have lunch there, so, y'all can come.
You scheduled your meeting at eleven-thirty?
Eleven-thirty.
Which is when a lot of us have to work, so...
You do realize also that Columbine had an SRO officer?
That's right, you're right. See, that's what I brought up to.
He just can't, I just don't know that that's gonna help crazy.
Can't protect against crazy.
Or me, or this vindictive.
I mean, an SRO officer in a school, and you're talking about not arming Shannon, because she weighs a hundred pounds. I mean, it don't make any difference, Mr. Beard, he don't weigh a hundred and fifty. I mean, if somebody wanted to take his gun away from him, two kids could take it away from him. And then you got just a gun in school, which you didn't need.
Look at people in prison.
And I'm gonna walk into a school, and I know there's a police officer, that's the first person I'm gonna look.
He's a sitting duck. He's a sitting duck. But look at people in prison, they kill each other. They're in prison behind concrete walls, they kill each other.
I suppose they're crazy, and we caught this.
Did, did Richland have an SRO? When, when did Richland start hitting, you know, when?
They didn't have one till after-
Till after the shooting?
No, till after the shooting.
Nobody did.
It wouldn't have made any difference if it had more. Shooting would have taken place anyway.
Right. I mean, I was at the hospital-
The only difference might have been that, rather than a life sentence, for those two kids that were in there, and they're still in jail over that, one of them might have been dead, or both of them might have been dead. Or another kid might have been dead, where you shoot that in the mist.
You know, there's several things that we can do. I'm setting the issue of the police officer in the school aside. State or federal government willing, don't make their money for that, I don't think we have a problem doing that. But, uh, he mentioned one gate. Certainly, that's something that would require some money, some one-time money, and a little bit to go the years after, that wouldn't be that expensive. I also think that we could establish, you know, kids will tell them, kids, if they can remain anonymous. Think if we had a, an anonymous line, that they could call in and say, hey, this kid's got a gun, or drugs, or whatever, as long as they can remain anonymous, we might get some information that way. And I think, you know, we, we educate the kids on cyberbullying, bullying, and that sort of thing. It's time for us to tell the kids, and educate them on how this is not a good thing for one of your friends to have a gun. So, I think there's, there's, there's some more things that we can do, but there's three things right there, that wouldn't take a lot of money. It's something we could do, uh, that, that wouldn't be a lot of money, except for that one gate there with, uh, access to it, and somebody watching that. And, you know, we've mentioned several things about having a police officer there, there are some other things besides a gunman knowing that they're there, they might say, well, I'm not going into the building, but then, they're gonna get on a school bus, gonna go to a football game, basketball game, gonna be in a parking lot, and you can't be in both places. But there is, with the, with the smaller kids who look up to the policeman, there is a safety issue that, that they might feel safer in their schools. Well, are the taxpayers gonna, uh, be willing to fund that? That's, that's the big question. Are they gonna be willing to fund that? And I still think in this economy, you're gonna have a lot of pushback on that even. So, one of the commissioners says, well, you can't give a price on the safety of your children. Well, you'd almost have to this day and time. Have a figure in mind, 'cause you could spend, we've already mentioned, we could spend after Wazoo on safety measures, and still miss the vote. So, I don't know, uh, I, I'm not trying to put a damper on the parade, certainly, I'm one vote out of, out of, uh, uh, I'm settling here, and, and I haven't made up my mind what path we should take either. But I think there definitely some things that we can do, that wouldn't be out of line. But, funding's gonna have to come from somewhere, because we don't have it.
What we're talking about.
We're, we're, we're in the business of educating our kids, and we don't have the money to have proper funding for the number of teachers that we need for Giles County.
I know, that's what you're talking about.
So, to me, the education, and it, it comes first. Safety's in there somewhere, I'm not sure, uh, 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 that we can put a ranking. But education has to be number one thing, so, I, I, I just have all those thoughts, I'm just throwing it out. I'm not proposing, uh, anything in particular, but I just have those thoughts in my mind. Uh, like, like you said, you can't put up a fence high enough. You, you can't have enough police officers in that building.
Just out of curiosity, how much is the county commission willing to help us out, if this is what-
Well, we don't know yet, but I can tell you what it's gonna cost. For six deputies, their benefits and everything, it's gonna run right at four hundred thousand dollars, a little bit more. So, you're talking about ten cents on the property tax, which, that's not a lot of money, but, still, somebody say, well, that's priced for hamburger. But some people out there would like to have a hamburger, too. I mean, but, what you said, well, some of these teachers, all these teachers, principals, and their director of school, need to talk to these children, tell them, say, okay, look, if you see somebody that you think may be suspected of doing this, please, if you come to us in secret, tell us, because this person is killed, maybe your brother, your sister, or your best friend. So, we need to know if you think somebody's gonna do this. Even the slightest thought that they may do, let us know. So, that would be up to the teachers to put that-
Unfortunately, the situation that just happened, it was, you know, it was a family member of a teacher, and they walked into the school, it wasn't a student that did it. It wasn't somebody who was, you know, taking out a vendetta on another student, it was, it was mad at his mom.
They didn't even walk into the school, they blew out the front glass. I mean, the school was locked down. So, even if we locked our schools down, then what is there to keep crazy from blowing out the front window and coming right on in?
Well, papers have been blowed out, they weren't bulletproof, was it? So, if you got a shooter fixing to go into school, if the windows are not bulletproof, they're gonna get in regardless, if you got fifteen SRO officers standing there.
Which goes back to what I said. They want to do this meanest, they want to kill somebody. All we got to do is lie here, say, uh, well, Pity Rich Road. School bus going through there, you got forty children on there, run them off the road and start shooting. You're not, you're going to completely stop it.
If, if you wanna look at how it can happen, look at Norway. That guy that shot sixty kids. Okay? He wasn't even on the grounds, and killed sixty people.
But it has changed the way that everybody, in every school district, does business now.
It, it's still just that reaction to, we immediately have to do something.
Right.
That's, that's our nature to say, let's fix this problem. Let's fix it where it'll never happen again. Until you find out that it costs you forty gazillion dollars to fix it in the United States. And, you know, we'd have to get, have what we, that China's long as back over here to fix it.
And I'm sorry, even if we had all that over here, it still wouldn't fix it.
Well, there's a will, there's a way.
Human, human beings are, are, you know, strange, strange creatures, and they'll find a way to hurt each other.
Well, y'all can keep in mind, you know, and think about what you wanna bring up up there, and, but it'll be the stuff, believe me, it will.
Well, Ms. Newton, how many doors do you have in your school?
I have at least four entrance and exit doors.
And are they all locked?
They, three of those are locked at all times. My front door stays open. Uh, the bus ramp is open during morning and afternoon busing. But after the buses, they're there, every door is locked, except for my front door.
But there, I mean, somebody can just push on the door, and they can get out.
And go out.
But, when the door closes, it locks.
Fire alarm, you gotta help that.
Right.
So, you got four entrance and exits within your building. What have you got, Mr. Smith?
More than four.
Yeah, I know it.
I mean, I don't know exactly, I mean, probably, shoot, ten doors or so, or more, exit doors and then-
Yeah, I was just thinking of Richland High School, Middle School.
Your gym doors, do they stay locked?
You must have fifteen doors up there. And I believe I could walk into that school almost any time that I wanted to. Because somebody has left a rock propped on the, on the one on the back, down next to the gym, where they can get back in and out, and, you know, I, I've never been up there when I could not get into school, but I have gone around that school several times, just to, just to see. I have actually moved the rocks and locked the doors.
Elton, Elton has so many doors, it's unreal. Every down, every down, every ground-level classroom-
Has a door?
Has a door.
But see, that has to have, I mean, you have to have a door as an emergency-
You have to have an emergency exit for kids, and, you know, that, that's okay, it protects from the outside. But it's still a glass culture, in most every case. Some of them are metal doors, yours on the end are metal, but they're glass.
Elton's are glass.
Now, Ms. Brink came out for this, unfortunately, minor hail, and so, as Ms. Shannon knows, is, you can walk around behind the gym, and it's where, it used to be the, the old exit and entrance, but they built on the front part of the gym. You can walk around the gym, and you can walk right through those doors, and you can halfway up to the nurse. I mean, you, you, you pass probably five of the classrooms where you may notice you.
Well, we definitely need, uh, I know we've got, you know, like, a fire drill, we do that, and all that kind of stuff. See dogs spitting around, and see if we can find drugs, I know we still do that, is that right? I don't know why we can't develop a, a plan until we figure out what we're gonna do physically, or otherwise. I don't know why we can't have some type of plan that the principals could implement, and let students practice that on.
All of our schools have emergency preparedness plans.
And that group that was just, that group that just had this last incident, had just finished practicing there as well, a day or two before.
That's okay, that's okay.
I mean, you can jerk it around, and you can say, well, we'll do this, and help, maybe satisfy the public for thinking that we, we tried, or we made an effort to, to make this better. But, you know, if you don't actually make it better, then you've done nothing but wasted time with the effort that you put into it.
Well, I hope y'all will be there, all the can, I hope-
I'll be there, and the reason I asked to have this put on this agenda tonight, where we could have some discussion over it, was I wanted to hear how the rest of the board, because a lot of you work, and I'm, I don't know whether you'll be there or not. I'm taking off from work to be there, but-
Unfortunately, I can't.
I, I, I don't want to look up and, and there's only one or two or three of us there, and have us make comments that are not what the whole board was, would really like to present. You know, otherwise, I'm going down there, and I'm gonna sit and listen.
The one, the one thing, something, we all agree, something needs to be done, okay? But, the biggest, the biggest part of it, and unfortunately, I think Mr. Story said it, unfortunately, it's gonna require money. You know? I mean, you can't put a price on our kids' safety, but unfortunately, we have to. You know, it's, if, if the public, if the public is, wants something done, and they do want something done, then we are gonna have to, to stand up and say, okay, you want, you want something done, then we need help.
Nothing comes without a cost.
You're absolutely right.
And, and I, you know, of course, if money wasn't an issue, I would love to see an officer in every school. I truly would. And, and I know that one, one man probably couldn't stop this maniac, or whatever you wanna call him, if he, but, at least he could get a response started quicker, or slow him down enough for somebody else to get there to help him. You know, instead of it being a, it's already happened, and then paper on the way. There's no good answer. And, I mean, you know it, I know it, all of us here know it.
It's gonna be mandated, I'm sure of that, by the state, just like our courthouse security, okay? And, and to me, maybe, I don't, don't write this down. Courthouse security, okay? Well, you've got colonels up there, you've got deputies there because of tickets, you've got state troopers there, you've got policemen, you've got people there with guns. Well, not about school. So, I said, let's take two of these deputies out of this courthouse, that's really, don't write this down, Trace, not needed.
You don't have to write it down, this is a court-
Well, I mean, you know, if you ask me something, I'm gonna tell you what I think about it.
And he might shoot their own clients.
And he could very well do it.
But I hope y'all be there.
You know, I, I wanna make one comment on what SRO officers, I think, would bring to the system, as much as, or more than the guns. And that's a presence, and, you know, we've, we've had several discussions up here about bullying, and those type things. And I know for a fact, after talking with a couple of SRO officers that we do have, that some of their kids confide in them for those type things. And, they can really help squelch those, and take that out of the system a little bit easier. I mean, that's the reason our alternative school has kids in it now, in some cases.
Have the, uh, our police officers, have they been asked to walk through the schools and part of their patrols? I don't see that that would be a good concept.
Well, when do you walk, Rick?
Uh, the last, for the last, uh, I guess this week, we've had an officer to come to two or three times a day. And the city, uh, has assigned an officer to go to Bridge Falls, South Side, and Kedasko Elementary. And he, he comes, he comes to the city two or three times a day, and, uh, so, that, that presence has been saying the kids are noticing. But that is happening, you know, as far as the city, I mean, they were doing that.
That's, that, that, that in itself is ours.
I've had an SRO in my building three days since school opened in January. It has made a big difference in the amount of parents that I have coming in and signing in. My parents will come, and they just wanna watch their babies walk down to get in the classroom. They don't feel like they need to sign in, because you come into my lobby, you don't meet the office- you don't meet the office first. You can go in any hallway you want to before you ever get to the office. There's a sign, and I can stand there and say it till I'm blue in the face. We even had parents tell the SRO officer, well, I'm just standing here, I'm just watching. But that SRO officer told them, the rule is, you sign in. You come in the building, you sign in. It has been a great help for us to have these parents just to sign in if they're in the building. So the days that they're there, it has been for us.
If the city is doing this for Bridgeforth and Calaski Elementary in South Side, then the county ought to be doing this for Ristland Elementary and for Minor Hill and for Elton.
Well, Elton, I mean, Elton has city police. They could have somebody.
They could do the same thing.
They could do the same thing, so does Minor Hill.
That helps him to tell you about that.
I, I, I don't see why he couldn't walk through the school a couple times a day. That wouldn't.
And just walk through the school, ride around the campus.
Um, you know, and everybody.
More people there.
You, you brought it up about arming, you know, possibly arming teachers and stuff like that. The, the bottom line on that is, you have to go back to, to safety. Somebody said about a couple students jumping the SRO. But if you get teachers who have guns, students are eventually gonna find out which teachers are armed. And if somebody wants to take that away, that gives you a gun in the school. That nobody's gonna know where it is after that. And.
That was one of my concerns. I had the armed teachers idea. I just, I just don't agree with that.
I changed my mind.
I don't agree with that, you know?
You know, the knee jerk reaction is, hey, that's a great idea. You get a couple guns in the school, and it gives you, it gives you this presence, and if something happens, you get somebody with a weapon. But when you get down to brass tacks, if somebody, you know, decides, hey, I don't have to bring a gun to school, Mr. Green's got a gun, I can get it from him.
I think the NRA's gotta help us a bunch right here, simply because, in my opinion, unless you're in law enforcement, unless you're in the military, you don't need an AR-15. You don't need an AK-47. You don't need an automatic repeating gun that will shoot thirty to sixty times in a minute.
No, I, I, I'm not gonna get into that discussion. It's for a different time.
I will comment on that. I'm like you. I did, I believe every law-abiding citizen should have a right to own and bear arms. But, now, I carried an M-16 when I was in Marine Corps. I don't need something that'll shoot twenty rounds in two seconds.
No.
That should, I agree, that should be outlawed. But, keep in mind, it goes back to that old saying, when guns are outlawed, who's gonna have guns? Outlaws.
As I said.
They don't break into houses out in the country because they know this town's got guns here.
Well, if outlawed, and law enforcement has got them, then, uh, the rest of us are just gonna get hurt when we got one.
When they bombed Pearl Harbor, the general told the emperor, if y'all know history, he said, let's bomb America and take America home. What did that emperor say? You can't do that. Everybody in America has guns. And that's what keeps us from being overrun by a country just walking in and, we got guns.
As I said before.
Keep in mind, if I have to hide some of them.
The, the Second Amendment, the First Amendment, Second Amendment, they're absolutely enfiled, okay? You cannot change those amendments. The Second Amendment gives us the right to bear arms. It says, but the reason it gave us the right to bear arms was not to protect our houses from burglars and not to protect, to feed our children, okay? The Second Amendment gave us the right to bear arms to protect ourselves, all right? And who do we, who were we protecting ourselves from? Was the government, okay? That's what it gave us that right for, because the British took away the guns. That's why the founding fathers put it there. It didn't say what kind of guns, I don't think the father, the founding fathers expected us to have guns that can shoot thirty rounds a minute. However, legally right now, or six hundred rounds a minute, I should say, legally right now, you can't own a weapon that does that, okay? You can have an AR-15. An AR-15 is not an automatic, automatic weapon. It's a semi-automatic weapon.
Semi-automatic.
Weapon. The M-16 was the automatic version of that. I carried the same weapon, okay? But the AR-15, yes, you can have a thirty-round magazine. That's what people are objecting to. Because they said this gentleman in, in Newtown fired that weapon and didn't have to reload. He fired off thirty rounds, flipped his magazine over to the second magazine, and was firing again that fast, okay? You can still empty that, that weapon in a minute just by sitting there pulling the trigger. So the problem is, is the weapons and the amount of ammunition that you can, you can put in there. That's what people are objecting to. But where do you draw the line if you say you can't do this, okay? That's why I said this is a discussion for a different time and not the school board. But the weapons in schools is where I was having my problem, you know, having teachers armed.
I didn't mean to hold up y'all's meetings, and I do appreciate your input on this. And like you said, that if somebody orders or goes to a gun store and buys an automatic weapon like that, should set off an alarm somewhere up there. So, well, now, this, what's this gonna mean, this gun for? Because now, if one of these six-year-old kids was shot, how many times? Thirteen times with that high-powered gun? Can you imagine what that child, and these people have lived that, the, the family. So I've always been for having guns, and I still have guns. It's not the gun that killed, it's whoever pulling the trigger. But these automatic weapons, nope, I'm not farming them. No, I'm not. Sorry to keep y'all. Need going strong.
Anything else on that? If not, we'll move on to the personnel report. Ms. Bray?
Okay. Okay, under new employees, we have one new teacher at the Bridgeforth Middle School, Ms. Carrie Marsh, and she will be, she's teaching, not will be, she is teaching physical education already. Uh, two retirements, Jan Bass, who is countywide special education teacher, and Ms. Connie Aldum from Giles County High School, special education teacher. Have a resignation for Ms. Gina Harrison. I think that she's got just a few more days with us at South Side Elementary. Resignation Molly Alvarez, teacher at Bridgeforth. She left us in December. Uh, request for leave, Ms. Rosanna Myers, the teacher at South Side Elementary. We have one change in assignment, and that is Patricia Weber, who was teaching at Giles County High School part-time in special education. Now, she has moved to full-time special education.
Are you without a nurse?
We have one higher pending the background check. As soon as we get that completed, we've got one going place. Ms. Harrison is gonna be with us a few more days. Good question.
Mallory has good experience.
And our interim director's report.
All right. We've discussed several things. One of the things on my agenda was to share the fact that many of us did attend the meeting that, uh, Mr. Pollard had at the law enforcement meeting, now the sheriff's office, and several is from the central office, most all are principals. And there was a lot of discussion, a lot of passion, just like you're hearing here. A lot of people had some ideas and some thoughts, and very concerned also. Um, and we'll share even beyond that. We knew there'd probably be another meeting, several discussions. I think one proactive thing that probably came out of that initial meeting, Mr. Pollard, is that we all went back to our schools, not that we weren't already thinking about just some of the little things we could begin to do to beef up security and be more aware of things in our school. Because I've heard many of the principals and people already tell, just a few little things they've already done and tweaked and put in place, just since this unfortunate incident, and making them think. Um, I did share with the law enforcement people that day that, uh, myself and, uh, Renata Houston and Ms. Sanders, I will be going to a safety summit in Williamson County a little bit later this month. And that is , uh, kinda being put on by the commissioner of education, has called for this safety summit and asked that people come together and talk about practices and best ideas and ways and things that we can, um, solve some of these problems. And they're gonna have some other resources there. I think Sheriff Hilton is also gonna be there at that meeting. Um, asked us to look more at our emergency preparedness plans and some things that have been working. I will share with you that I've spent a good portion of the day with the, um, other superintendents of the South Central District, and it seemed to be one of the big topics that we talked about, was safety and what different school systems we're doing, and, and what might be coming down out of the legislature, and bills that were introduced to possibly help with the funding. And, uh, so we're anticipating several things that could happen. I personally heard, I guess, Beth Harwell speak of the other day, uh, before the legislative, legislative session began, say that they anticipated several bills to come down through the legislature in regard to school safety. So I think we're all looking for solutions. So I just share that with you, and I'll keep you informed as, as I know more that's happening around the state on that. Uh, the other thing, I just bring you up today about the advertising on the school buses. I have been in contact with the, um, person from Alpha Media. We've had such a couple of conversations and communicated by email. I'm looking at their proposed contract, and, uh, we're reviewing some things now. So there'll probably be some movement on that. But I'll keep you apprised on that as we go. Uh, talking about the legislature, I just wanna remind the board that the legislative day on the hill is coming up on February the twentieth. I think Ms. Shannon Marsh sent you some information about that a month or so ago, and, uh, just give you, give you a reminder. If you're interested, you need to let her know. I know it's hard, probably hard to even get a room if we can. And if you don't go up to stay the night and just go to date, I believe we need to know that so we can turn your name in. Also, uh, next month, February, I'll be bringing to you the proposed school calendar. School calendar committee has been working for a couple of months, and they've brought to me a calendar, and I've had several of the supervisors look at it, had the testing coordinator look at it, be sure that we don't have any problems anywhere with what we think, uh, might affect our school year. So i- it's about fine tuning. I'll be sending that out for your reviews. Just now, February is the month that we do set the school calendar for the next year. Later on, I've already had several calls from parents and workers wanting to win fall break, or they win spring break. And so they count on that, because they scheduled their holidays, and you all are well aware of that. So that's coming up next month. Um, I do think that this board might wanna entertain having a work session. You know, we've got the selection of the director of schools coming up. And in February, um, that week between February twenty-fourth and March first, you'll be doing some interviewing and looking. So, uh, I, I think the process will be narrowed down before then. You'll know something about your candidates, and, uh, you might want to just spend some time in a work session before we're talking, before we get to our next board meeting. Um, so if you give me some direction on it, I could possibly, we could look at some dates. Another thing that we're gonna have to do is a budget amendment. It's something down, go to the commission, ask for a budget amendment in several item areas. And I think you always like having this mower come up and let's look where we are, and if you got line items we're over, and then we may have to move around some money. So I guess, I'm just asking the board if you'd be interested in doing a work session here before your next board meeting. If so, would you like to suggest some dates, or would you like to remain? We could do it in the evening. We could do it on a Saturday. We've had, uh, we've had retreats. We, I both would be here, yeah.
I'm good any day, but just the twenty-fourth of January or the nineteenth.
Yeah, Vic's board Vic will be on Valentine Day. I think when Mr. Vic was here before, you know, he said, he'd say something for Thanksgiving, remind us, you know, that's Valentine Day. And I think that was the approved schedule in our director's, sir. Pardon?
Would it be bad to have a work session after the board meeting, or before the board meeting?
Valentine's Day?
Jerry's gonna be behind you before he starts saying that.
I just thought I'd be behind you.
We do need to have a work session. We need to have a work session concerning, uh, these interviews and, and the selection process and the whole nine yards. We also need to have a work session, or get started, or get thinking about a work session for this year's budget.
Absolutely.
It's gonna be here before you know it. And, you know, we need to know where we are, and we need to start getting information from this board on where we stand in.
How about next Thursday?
I'll, I'll be gone next Thursday. I'll be out of town.
When do you?
I think they have, I think they have one, too.
Y'all have that?
All right. When do you go? When do you, I'm, I'm asking when you leave.
Sometime Thursday.
Sometime Thursday? So on, uh, Wednesday the sixteenth?
Thursday.
The day before.
Thursday night.
Thursday.
The fifteenth?
Just going out dates here. It's a Tuesday.
Well, that would be the same day that they have their thing. I mean, they would have the, what am I trying to say? There would be earlier in the day if they chose that day. We have some kinda feedback.
Swamp John's a servant. Do you still have a four bottle?
So, the fifteenth, fifteenth is the date.
How about the twenty second?
Homecoming, Grishman.
All right. What are the other dates?
How about the twenty second?
Tuesday the twenty second?
Yeah.
Goodbye, Nick.
All right, Eric.
I'm, I'm, I've got, I'm marketing to the team.
Oh, aren't you?
Oh, well, my problem.
We all.
I'm, I can't be here Thursday.
What about the twenty fifth?
It's, it's my mom's birthday, and I'm not gonna be here.
What about that Monday?
The twenty first on Monday.
Twenty first on Monday.
Versus today, we are, schools, we're not in schools. It's a holiday.
It's a holiday.
I, well, I mean, we won't be in school. We will be here, but that's a holiday.
But is there any reason?
That'd be a good lucky day for me.
Five o'clock, Monday the twenty first.
Okay. It's, it's a holiday, it's a school holiday, but I mean, I'm okay with that.
Well, y'all won't be here.
Whoa, how, how are you?
Y'all wanna jump it to the twenty eighth then, or the twenty ninth? What, how's your schedule looking there, um, of next week?
Last week, January.
I can't, it's my mom's birthday.
It is not, it won't be yours, is it?
Yeah, not missing it.
I'm from twenty three, twenty eight.
Is the momma's birthday this point?
You don't, you don't wish for that.
No.
Twenty nine.
Okay, twenty eighth or twenty ninth, whichever one of them.
What about, did somebody say the fourteenth?
Either, either one of twenty eighth or twenty ninth is five o'clock.
Okay. Which one did y'all, y'all prefer, Monday or the Tuesday?
Super Tuesday. These are awful, huh?
Tuesday the twenty ninth at five o'clock.
January twenty eighth.
Five o'clock.
We start breaking up at twenty nine.
And we will have this mower here, and we'll talk about some of this.
That's very much the, the day of the safety meeting.
That's it, that'd be that day. That'd be that day, um, yeah. That's the safety summit we're coming to. So I, I, I can make plans to be sure that I'm there, even if I leave you there. Maybe if it starts early in the morning, I don't remember the hours. Got four. I'll be sure that I leave, and I'll come back.
You're a few minutes late. We can wait until after then start. It'll be good.
Five o'clock.
I'll be here. Five o'clock. It's five o'clock somewhere. We'll be five o'clock
when we're here.
You got anything else?
That's it.
Is anyone in the audience that has any comments?
I wanna ask Ms. Chapman. She said that she got the, um, right here, when you were talking about the District of Excellence, where did that come from?
That came from the student association.
Okay, thanks.
Anyone else? No, I'll ask for a motion to adjourn.
Call Lou.
Just a second.
Call his plate. Stand adjourned.
Rachel.